Filling in for both of them, so I guess we have the B team. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Richard Bush to come forward and give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Good evening. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive those that we've trespass, those that trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin and evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory henceforth now and forevermore. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bush. Pastor Bush is the pastor at Mount Zion Baptist Church at 1789 Hawthorne Avenue. As the mayor does, if any of you are looking for a new church or looking for a first-time church, I'm sure they'd welcome you and be glad to have you there. Agenda changes. I do think we are going to table one item that will come up in a few minutes here. Item 6E for the abandonment of an alleyway at 1529 and 1539 Roswell Street. That will be handled later on by Ms. Blackburn. Excuse me, and 6... Both those items will be tabled this evening. At this time, we have the mayor report, and I'd like to call up Chief Roy Akery if he would give us a little report on Stereogenics.
Thank you, sir. Good evening to everybody. So I know that there is a significant amount of concern with regard to overall air quality in the South Cobb County area to include some portions of the city of Smyrna. So I appreciate the opportunity just to come real quick and kind of share with everybody some of the steps that are being put in place right now with regard to the structure and how we, as the city of Smyrna, and also in partnership with Cobb County, kind of deal with these concerns. So there's two primary things happening that are very positive. First of all, Mayor Bacon is in the process of establishing what probably will be titled a Joint Oversight Committee. That Joint Oversight Committee will be composed of local elected officials, of public health and emergency management professionals, and also have room at the table, so to speak, on that committee for any local stakeholders that whomever should chair the Oversight Committee would like to have on that committee. In addition to that, Mayor Bacon has authorized the establishment of an independent air quality task force. The task force is going to be only composed of about five or six people, but they will be industry experts that are independent from whether it's the city of Smyrna, Cobb County, Stereogenics Schools, anybody. Just to give you an example of the makeup of this task force, there will be a chemical engineer, a toxicologist, an industrial hygienist, an environmental attorney, and ambient air sampling experts. The primary role of that task force would be to both help guide, ask questions of the Oversight Committee, and to help steer best practices and what it is that they would recommend to the committee that be performed, whether it's air sampling or whatever that panel of experts would recommend. So I can also say that we're confident in the capabilities of the formation of the task force, and I'm happy to see that we're going to have a Joint Oversight Committee, all in an effort to try to just get to the facts so that we can share openly what those facts are. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any at this time.
Thank you, Roy. I know we all have a lot of questions about this, and I think some of those questions will be answered tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll be putting something out on that issue on our webpage and do what we can to get the questions answered. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, since we have the chief up there, could I get him to give an update on a recent fire that occurred in Ward 7?
Yes, sir.
For people who may be interested.
So the S.P. Richards fire?
Top 10 employer in the city.
S.P. Richards is a large, as you mentioned, one of the top employers in the city of Smyrna. They've been in that facility and Highlands Industrial since, I believe, 1988. So they've been there for a long time. On Friday, July 19, I believe, we experienced, by all accounts, the largest commercial structure fire, to my knowledge, in the history of the city of Smyrna. S.P. Richards that night lost their primary distribution warehouse hub, and they also had significant damage to their three-story administrative offices, which was their world headquarters. But I can tell you that S.P. Richards is an incredibly impressive and professional company. They were prepared with contingency plans, with continuity of business plans. Not only were they prepared with those plans, that they made it a corporate practice to exercise those plans annually. Because of that, they were able to continue both, all of their operations, both the intake for sales and the distribution hub, with eight hours of downtime. It was incredibly impressive. They're a wonderful, wonderful company. We were physically on scene for seven days. We flowed almost 6 million gallons of water to get it under control. We had to utilize Cobb County, the city of Marietta, city of Atlanta, DeKalb County, the city of Forest Park, and the city of Sandy Springs, and heavy equipment from three different demolition companies to help us get that under control. Incredibly proud of the men and women that serve here in the city of Smyrna in public Even though we're talking about a very unfortunate thing, S.P. Richards was incredibly prepared there. He very, very well ran leadership-strong corporation, and the men and women that serve here in the city of Smyrna are constant professionals. I'm very proud of all of them.
And Chief, as the former Chair of Public Safety, the Ward Representative, I'm still on the Public Safety Committee, but I'll join with our Public Safety Committee in applauding the team, the responsiveness, the diligence, the relationship for all sides of the equation with our mutual aid partners, with the opportunity for neighboring jurisdictions and the relationships you all have built. But the team did an excellent job making sure that it became a safe outcome despite its destructive nature. Fire is not forgiving. But thank you for the work of preparation that your team had and that the company had. This top 10 employer is still selling product and shipping product. They have neighboring places where they still do business. So we're grateful that the outcome was as seamless as we see. Thank you for your team and the work you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item 3A is a proclamation in recognition of Nathan Lugo, a young, local, top-ranked champion boxer, and I think Ms. Maryline Blackburn is going to handle that.
Absolutely. Well, good evening.
Is Mr. Lugo here this evening?
It's Nathan. Nathan, are you here?
If you would, please come up with any family or representative that you'd like to bring up with you.
I know. Welcome. This is really exciting. Nathan, you're 14?
I just turned 15.
You just turned 15. Okay, well, happy belated birthday. We're really excited that you're here because what you have accomplished is absolutely phenomenal, and I'm really excited. And so because of that, we want to honor you. And before I read the proclamation, I do want to share that on August 12, I do believe you are going to be going to Serbia for another huge international tournament. So we're going to wish you the best of luck. For those of the audience that do not know, Nathan is a champion youth boxer, and he has won several awards, and we're really excited about that. And you've brought this title home to Smyrna, and we're glad. Once again, that's why Smyrna's one of the top 50 cities to live in. You're helping make that happen even more so. So with that, in recognition of Nathan Lugo, whereas Nathan Lugo's achievements started early in his boxing career, and whereas in 2014 Nathan was the only boxer in Georgia to win a national title for our great state, many overlook the then nine-year-old boxer who was making history. And whereas from 2012 to 2019, Nathan Lugo is the most decorated amateur boxer in Georgia to date, and whereas Nathan is a current member of Team USA and has over 200 record bouts, 12 national titles, and a gold medal in the biggest junior international tournament, he is the essence of what our city and county are built on: hard work. And whereas the numerous titles held by Nathan are unheard of for a boxer his age: National Silver Gloves four times, National Junior Golden Gloves three times, National Junior Olympics three times, USAB Elite Nationals two times, International Gold. And whereas Nathan's crowning achievement was during his recent trip to Edgar, Hungary, where he won gold for his country, state, and state, city, and gym, and presented his father with the medal in honor of Father's Day. And whereas Nathan was born in Florida and has been a proud resident of Smyrna, Georgia since 2010, he is a son to Michael and Angela Lugo, and has one younger brother, Elijah, who is also a national-level boxer. Now, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim August 5, 2019, as a day of recognition for Nathan Lugo, and encourage all city residents, officials, and staff to congratulate him on his remarkable accomplishments and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Congratulations. She's going to come down and present you with that proclamation, but I'm going to ask you to tell us a little bit about that belt you've got on your shoulder.
Can I just try it on?
So this belt is a... So I had to get on the team through a fight in Utah. This belt, I beat the guy that had the number-one ranked spot and that was currently on the team for the J.O.s. The guy was really hard, but I came out on top. I outboxed him and outlanded his punches.
Congratulations to you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you picking Smyrna as your home, your parents picking it up here. So thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Item 4 is land use and zoning annexations. We have none. Item 5 is privileged licenses. We have none. Item 6, formal business. 6A is the adoption of the 2019 millage rate of 8.99 mils. I'm going to call on Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a proud history of fiscal management in the city of Smyrna, and the mayor questioned a statistic that we've been offering up, that we haven't had a millage rate increase in the last several years. The other night, not only was he right and I was wrong, but he actually helped me understand the length and breadth of the fiscal responsibility that preceded our council. And the mayor and those team members who came before us, I have a chart here. I haven't put it up on the screen, but you can see that our millage rate was here. It dropped precipitously through the 90s to the point of 2005, we landed at 8.99 mils, and we have been maintaining that ever since. So since 2000... Since 1993, we've had a fall or a steady millage rate over that period of time during this period of enormous growth for the city of Smyrna, and we're very proud of that. I'll put this on my next newsletter and post it on Facebook. But I want to applaud the mayor, previous councils that have managed our resources carefully and kept our taxes at a low rate, and I move approval of the maintenance of the same millage rate, 8.99.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Cast your votes, please. Motion carries five to zero. Again, I'm filling in for the mayor this evening, and Councilman Norton is out. Item 6B, ordinance for the approval of the 2019... Of ordinance 2019-14 to amend the city of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 90, Article 1, and General Section 90-04 for the private utilities within public right-of-way. It's under Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a new ordinance that will give some direction and clarity to how we control or at least know about private utilities that get installed in the public right-of-way. So in essence, homeowners would just need to notify the city, get a permit if they're going to put their sprinkler or whatnot into the public right-of-way, and at least we'll know about it. And so Public Works has a understanding where those items are and has input into how that happens. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item...
6C.
I was interested in asking Frank a question. I just would like to know, does that affect utilities that are already... That homeowners or it's really, I'm thinking of a townhome community that has utilities in the public right-of-way. Does this new ordinance affect those types of communities?
No, ma'am, I'm afraid it does not.
Okay.
Just going forward, so we have ways for rules and standards going forward.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion?
Without any more questions, I move to approve item 6B, ORD 2019-14, Approval to Amend the City of Smyrna's Code, Ordinance, Chapter 90, Article 1, and General Section 90-04, Private Utilities Within the Public Right-of-Way. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. If you would, cast your vote. Item passes five to zero. Item 6C is to be tabled. Ms. Wilkinson, would you take care of that, please?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we had a little bit of discussion about this already, and we would like to table it so we can get just some more clarification. And so at this time, I'd like to move to table item 6C, 2019-265, Award RFQ 19-024, Architectural Design Services Community Center, Phase 2, to the most responsive and responsible proposer, fully designed, 950 Lowry Boulevard, Northwest, Suite 21, Atlanta, Georgia, 30318, for $45,000 funded through 2019 CDGB, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Oh, and tabling it to August 19.
Have a motion and a second to table item 6C until August 19. Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. That will be brought forth on the August 19 council meeting. Item 6D, Approval of a Resolution Creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee to Plan and Conduct Local Education Initiatives, Publicity, and Promotional Activities to Increase Community Awareness and Participation in the 2020 Census. That falls under Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an opportunity every 10 years we get since the founding of our constitution to count everybody in the United States in a portion districts accordingly. So we are asking to put a little funding in for marketing to help invite people to participate in the process and recruit a team to actually get a complete count at the end of the day. So I move approval of... Resolution 2019-04 regarding the Census Complete Count Committee.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Oh, excuse me, I'm looking at the last one. If you would, please cast your vote. Motion carries five, zero. Item 6E, we've agreed to table. Ms. Blackburn, if you would, bring that forward.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Honor. I would like to table item 6C until we get additional information regarding an alleyway that is on Roswell Street. So I move to table item 6E, 2019-264, Abandoning an Alleyway Behind 1529 and 1539 Roswell Street, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents to convey the alleyway on the adjacent property, owners at such until August 19.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If you would, please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. Item 6F, Authorize the Acquisition of Real Property by All Lawful Means for Improvements on to Windy Hill Road. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking for each parcel a portion of 1047 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 5, 1055 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 4, 1075 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 3, and the entirety of 997 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 10. Ms. Sadler Jones, background.
Thank you, Mr. Wilch. Again, this is a request for authorization of the acquisition of real property by all lawful means for improvement to the Windy Hill Boulevard project. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking, if necessary, for parcels that are not purchased through negotiated sale. The property is situated adjacent to the existing right-of-way and within an area stretching from the intersection with Atlanta Road to the intersection with South Cobb Drive. The addresses, as previously mentioned, a portion of 1047 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 5, 1055 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 4, 1075 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 3, and the entirety of 997 Windy Hill Road, Parcel 10. Staff does recommend approval.
This is under Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are continuing at a pace. We're on schedule for the completion of the Windy Hill Project under the SPOLOST Funding Partnership between the Cobb County Government and the city of Smyrna Government, and this is a component that will get us near the land acquisition stage. I think we have a couple more left to go, but we're nearing the end of that. So I move approval of 2019-266.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Motion carries four to one. Item number seven, Commercial Building Permits. We have none. Item number eight, Consent Agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, if you would, please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, Approval of the July 15, 2019 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Approval of the July 15, 2019 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, Approval of the July 11, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item D, Budget Amendment to Move Previously Budget Funds From Community Development Department to the Economic Development Department, which is now under the City Administrator's Office, effective July 1, 2019. Item E, Approval of the City to Lease 53 Parking Spaces to Campbell High School on Belmont Boulevard at Ward Street from August 1, 2019 through May 20, 2020, that is, the entire school year, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item F, Approval to Use Council Chambers for Vinings Forest HOA Meeting, Wednesday, August 14, 2019, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second. If you would, please cast your vote. Motion carries four to one with Ms. Susan Wilkinson, NNA. Item nine is committee reports. I'm going to start this evening with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will update a little bit more in my next newsletter, but I mentioned about the millage rate. I thought that was important to note as Chair of the Finance Committee. It was even better news to learn what I learned when the staff went back further in our history to realize how well Pete Wood and his committees and the previous councils have been at managing our money. And I just want to rest on that as a committee of finance for the moment, and we'll have more later. Two things outside of my committee responsibilities. One, we recognize the loss of one of our longtime city staffers. We lost him in his retirement. He really should have been playing golf today. But Stan Hook was a great member of our city's team for a number of years since we got him to unretire from his New York Police retirement, and he represented the city very well with recruitment of some of the best law enforcement team members that we've had in the city. We appreciate him. We laid him to rest last week, and as a Ward 7 resident, he never really asked anything of his councilmen, but his family and the others who are around are a tight-knit group. And although he lived in a little gated community, there was nobody going to do anything in that neighborhood with that chief and his best friend that he recruited in retirement down to the area who gave his eulogy. But we remember Stan Hook and his service to the city as police chief, and we thank him and his family for their contribution to our city. Secondly, the birthday celebration that we're going to talk... Someone's going to talk about here. It's amazing how a city continues to recognize things that make us who we are, one of the top 50 cities in the U.S. And so I was proud to see the whole team. I wasn't able to be there because of a family commitment, but everybody else seemed to make it, and I hope you had a good time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To expand on Councilman Fennel's statement about the birthday celebration, it really was amazing, amazing evening. It's great seeing so many folks out there. But, you know, a big thank to the staff. They work hard to make that happen. Of course, across the whole city, all departments are involved, and it's really very much appreciated. Without their hard work and expertise, that night would not be nearly as successful. So thank you. It's great news the mayor is starting the Joint Oversight Committee and getting that kicked off, so we appreciate Chief Akery explaining that. And I mean, I think it's such an important for our residents to know that we're going to take the actions we can, be proactive, and help and ensure that our community is safe and providing as much information as possible, right, and education along the way so people can get a better understanding of where we are today and where we'll be in the future. So that's great news. And with that, I...
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I just want to say that I had a wonderful time on Saturday night at the birthday celebration, and I enjoyed seeing a lot of constituents out there. It was a very great evening, good weather. The weather held off, and so it made it a wonderful event. And I want to also thank the staff for all the hard work that goes into making that event successful, the Parks and Recreation Staff, Public Works Staff, also Community Relations Staff, and just I hope everyone enjoyed it. Thanks. With that, I yield.
Ms. Maryline Blackburn.
Thank you. I once again want to say congratulations to Nathan Lugo again for his accomplishments. We're really, really proud of that, and I think when you have young people in our community... We're really, really proud of that, and I think when you have young people in our community who are doing great things and inspiring to be a great person, we have to make sure we continue to acknowledge them. That's very important. Also want to say that the birthday celebration was phenomenal, to see so many people out and the families and having such a great time and listening to both bands, and of course, Bangs and Shane did what they normally do, and that was play good music, and everybody had a great time. So that was really a lot of fun, and I'm very, very proud of our city for coming together and showing people that we're really cool. On a sad note, I do want to say that Williams Park in my ward here lost a very dear neighbor, Mr. Leon McElvin, and I went to his services today as memorial service, and it was very touching to see all of the community in that area come out and comfort that family during this time. So just want them to know and the community to know that they are definitely in my prayers during this most difficult time, so, and he will definitely be missed because he was one of those guys where when he smiled, the entire room just lit up, and you knew that Leon was around. Then also want to talk about the 2020 census, as Councilman Fennel spoke about. That's very important, and we really want individuals to get involved in our census. I think there's a hashtag called Smyrna Counts, okay, hashtag Smyrna Counts. So every time you see something or you do something on your Facebook page, do that hashtag Smyrna Counts, because we do, and we want people to know that we're here. We want to be counted as well. And then last, I also wanted to say thank you, Chief Akri, for that update on the sterrogene issue. Thanks to the mayor for, you know, putting together the Joint Oversight Committee and our Air Quality Task Force. I think that's very important, that we make sure we communicate with our constituents, with the public, to let them know exactly what we are doing and how concerned we are about the safety of our committee, of our community as well. So thank you for that. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Well, I want to just comment on the loss of our former police chief, Chief Hook. He was a wonderful individual and really had a lot, he really had a lot of respect from the community, from what I gather, because I know that we really liked him a great deal, and we hate the loss of him, but you don't choose your time. That's the sad part. And I guess you've gathered that we had a great time at the festival Saturday night. We hope that everybody else did, because we were having a really fantastic time and had a lot of people and kids running to the fountain and splashing water and whatever. But anyway, if you didn't make it this year, be sure and put it on your calendar for next year. It's usually the first Saturday night in August. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. I want to reiterate what, what the council members have said regarding Chief Hook, and I'll say this, he is the only person I've ever known that based the criteria for buying a new car on whether or not his golf clubs would fit in the trunk. He was an avid golfer and just a great chief and great gentleman all the way around. Ms. Sadler Jones?
I just wanted to express condolences to our IT Director, Chris Addicks. Chris lost his mother, so please keep Chris and his family in your thoughts and prayers. And then also I wanted Scott Andrews to share something exciting with you that our police department is doing in regards to Braves Day, well, Smyrna Day at Braves, Atlanta Braves Stadium.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. So a few weeks back, a couple of the community kids wanted to get in a race and challenge one of our officers to a foot race, and the, you know, loser had, or winner bought ice cream. So long story short, the police let the kids win, and they still bought the ice cream, of course. So word got out, our communications team here, Lewis Defense, tagged the freeze in social media, and word got to the Braves. So long story short, we are partnering with the Braves Wednesday, the 21st, when they take on the Marlins. That'll be Smyrna Day at Atlanta Braves at the stadium there at SunTrust Park. So we'll have more information coming out of that in the next few days, so stay tuned on social media, but mark the calendar for the 21st. Thank you.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Graham.
Yes, I'd like to let everyone know about qualifying. We have qualifying this, this month. The municipal qualifying period this year is determined by OCGA 21-2-132. This takes place between Monday, August the 19th, and Friday, September the 4th. Within that week, a municipality must designate no less than three consecutive days in which to conduct a qualifying. The hours for each day are 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. with a one-hour lunch break. Qualifying fees were set at the January 7th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Qualifying fee for mayor is $756. Qualifying for each council member, wards 1 through 7, is $567. Qualifying will be held in the Human Resources Training Room on the first floor of Smyrna City Hall, 2800 King Street, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, as follows. Tuesday, August the 20th, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Wednesday, August the 21st, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Thursday, August the 22nd, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And each day, the qualifying personnel will take lunch from 12 to 1 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is a show cause hearings. There are none. Jerry, I don't have a sign up for citizen input. I'm gonna call on her on Ron Fennel. He has something he'd like to say this morning, or this evening. I have no one signed up for citizen input this evening, other than Ron.
Well, good evening, all. Since qualifying is coming up, and in order to allow everyone else who may be considering, I'm gonna read this statement, I'm gonna insert it in the record. "Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and citizens of Smyrna come before you tonight to, with gratitude and humility, to let the voters know that you have granted me a high honor and a great privilege to serve on this city council for two full terms. And in 2011, when we were sworn in, I embarked on this new chapter of public service after I had already thought I was done with public service, but I was wrangled to get back in, to represent the constituents of Ward 7 in the southern part of the city. Some of you will recall when Cindy and I brought our two young boys, Walker held the Bible, but he couldn't see over my hand, her hands holding the Bible, that's how small they were. And so they are 11, and at the end of this month, Hunter will turn 13. So all of their elementary school years, Dad's been on council, been to meetings, and been taken away from seeing them in the evenings. And as they will soon be young teens and young men, during their formative years, I intend to focus on being a better father and a better husband and a provider for my family. I'm excited about this chapter of my life. They have tolerated my service and many hours away at meetings, on, on the phone, or otherwise reading and preparing, and doing constituent service. But I have distracted from their attention that they deserve from their father. After this year, I look forward to spending more time, quality time, and being involved, and being more accessible to them so that they can enjoy what they should have a father, and so I'll do that. Therefore, I will not seek reelection this cycle, and will instead focus on my job, so I'm gonna go back to that chair and continue to work until my time is done. I'm still working, I'm happy to do that, and I'll continue to do that, and I'm always gonna be a fan and supporter of everything that you all do. I know how difficult decisions are that you render and how you have to pour over an awful lot of information and weigh a lot of value propositions, but thank you for the opportunity. Before the year's out, I'm probably gonna have a little bit more to say, surprise, surprise to everyone, but this be my, is my opportunity to let the public know, if somebody is interested in serving on this august body, just be forewarned. It's hard work, it takes diligence, it takes your heart, but it takes you away from your family, your business, and other things. It is a great job, I wouldn't trade it for anything, and I value the eight years that I had the privilege of sitting in that chair, and I will continue to work before, until the next person gets a chance to serve in that role. Qualifying, just, you just announced, the 20th through the 22nd is qualifying, and later this fall, whenever I say more, I'll talk about my years on the council, and I have at least one more newsletter, if not more. I have a lot to say, and I'll share it. But thank you all for the privilege of working with you and the previous council members. We're excited to see where Smyrna's going, but I'm more excited to spend time watching my kids up close and personal become young men. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron. It's been a pleasure working with you and look forward to working with you, whoever plays with you. Item 12 is the adjournment. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, I call this meeting adjourned at 7:42.